Mike used bacon to get over his addiction to beef. Here's Mike Winters.
Didn't work. Now I'm a crackhead for beef and bacon. Good morning. That's right.
Together, yes.
All the same plate.
He will not eat beef. It's true fact. Mike Winters will not eat beef unless he's eating bacon with it.
That's right. You gotta, what's the perfect condiment for a burger? Bacon.
The fast food places love him because he's always been, they're getting that upsell, that big adding the bacon to the.
Doctor not so happy, but. It is 23 minutes after.
He's happy too. He's selling you more drugs.
This is true. I'm keeping him in business.
Thank you for doing your part for the economy.
There you go. I'm just, I'm helping. I'm helping. I'll be, I'll be shutting down your restaurant soon, just so. Jacob Robuck joining us here in studio, city councillor representing Warren One. Good morning. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of course, for folks, you know, that don't know, Jacob is, has decided not to run for his, his second term. So he's going to be done here in a couple of weeks, really.
We, we worked through the end of, end of March.
There you go.
April one is when the actual flip happens.
So he's, he's got one month remaining as city councillor here. First, thanks for serving.
Oh, yeah.
This is something, I said it to all the people when I had him on here running during the election. These local elections, for the most part, these are people that, you know, we, we all live here in this community. They're locals, they, you know, most, you know, people are signing up for this, not, you know, necessarily for the glory of it.
Oh, it's all about the glory.
I mean, they're doing it because they want to do their part. And so even though we all disagree on stuff, I, I do appreciate you and, and everyone for stepping up and doing their part.
Absolutely.
It's one of those things. Now that being said.
Yeah.
I know you wanted to come on today because you, you know, you, you've been watching the, you've been hearing, you've been hearing everything that's going on.
It's been an interesting election cycle, you know, um, we, we have, as, as a councillor, you know, as, and we just, I decided not, I say we, because my wife and I, my wife's obviously involved in the decision as well. We decided not to, to run again this, uh, this cycle, uh, because we have some, you know, we decided to stay in Roswell about what 11 years ago now. Um, and when we decided that, we said, hey, we want to, we want to contribute to the community. We want to help make the community a better place as, you know, we want to be good citizens. Um, and.
And you've been doing that for 10 years.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, you know, when, when this election came up and we had to decide about it, um, you know, we, we also have some other opportunities with our tourism business that we think is, is very important as well. Um, we're working on some new projects that I'm sure I'll be on to talk about post, post things, but.
And I imagine your, your Christmas railway aspirations will keep growing and going and everything else.
And so it's just a matter of, I, I think people may not realize this about city council, but to do city council well, it takes a lot of time.
It does.
You know, you've got, you have, you have at least three meetings, probably average five or six, five meetings, probably six, probably about five meetings on average a month. All those meetings are going to be at least two hours. Um, and that's not any meeting prep, any like going and sitting down. Yeah. Yeah. So it, it's a huge time commitment and, uh, you know, and, um, it's one thing that where if I was going to do it, I want to make sure that I can do it. I have enough time to do it right. Um, and I'm not ruling out running again in the future at all.
Sure.
You know, I think we're gonna, my wife and I will stay actively engaged in our community. It's our plan anyway. Um, so, but, uh, for this cycle is like, okay, if I can't do it really well, let me, let me step out with somebody else.
You gotta focus on your business. You wanna focus more on a, you know, like, like you do your nonprofit ventures, you know, the, the. Royal Family Kids and Purple Day. That's, that's, that, that was something you really brought here to our community and, and, and obviously the Christmas Railway. You always every year want to come bigger and bolder and better. And, and that requires time to do all that stuff.
It, it sure does. Um, and, and I think it's, we have to look at and say, okay, how, everybody contributes to this community in some way. You know, hopefully everybody's actively thinking about it. How am I making my community a better place?
Sure.
Um, and, and hopefully everybody is at some point in their, you know, in their annual rhythm or whatever, they stop and they kind of evaluate, what am I doing? How can I be doing a better job? What do I need to be letting go?
Sure.
You know, if we're not careful as human beings, we'll just let, the world will tell us what to do and we'll just keep, it'll just roll us in. And so.
Sure.
Um, and so, you know, we just made that focus, but, uh, you know, it's been interesting, it's been an interesting race. And I think the interesting thing is of being on the council for, you know, I've been on for four years. It's been a crazy four years. I, I don't know if I would have run. If I'd have known I would have, we have any deal with the shutdowns.
Sure. Yeah. You got arguably, arguably one of the most trying times, uh, probably that city councils had to worry about. Probably since maybe World War Two Vietnam era, you know?
Well, yeah, I, I think the, the, and I think the other thing that's happened is that, is that over the past, you know, because of the shutdowns, it's really forced a national politics down to the local level, you know? I think, I think there's a natural tendency for us to resist sort of the, you know, we don't want to do business the same way business is done in Santa Fe. We don't want to do business the same way business is done in Washington, because we are all neighbors, number one, because we don't have to. We don't have to be, you know, dirty or whatever. We can really just, let's talk about the ideas.
Sure.
Um, and, uh, you know, I think.
Figure it out together.
Yeah. And figure it out together. Um, you know, take things to votes, um, and, and see, and see where the, the chips lie, but not get so overly invested in any one thing that, that, uh, that the emotions rule out.
I, I'm curious of lessons learned for you. I, I'm sure, you know, you had an idea going in of being a city councillor and what it involves and things. Obviously COVID, everything, no, no, nobody imagined those things happen, but, but looking after your term here, what's like, what, going in now, knowing what you know now, what, what is there? And I'm not saying different or anything, but what, what information would you, like, say you ran again or, or if you run it again in the future? What would you do differently?
Well, I, I think, I think, um, I think the main, most important thing is focus. Um, and that you have to be very focused because there are, there's so many, you end up putting out so many fires.
Right.
You end up putting out so many fires, you know, we spent a ton of time on, on like cannabis laws. We've spent, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't ask for cannabis laws to come up. Obviously, uh, we spent a lot of time dealing with the shutdowns.
Sure.
Um, and, uh, so I, I think that in order to get anything done, it takes an incredible amount of focus. And inversely, I think that good ideas don't just get done. It take, you need a good idea and you need somebody on city council to be a champion. Yes. Every good idea needs a champion. Otherwise it gets lost because, and this is what, you know, why is it so much work? Well, well, the reality is, I'm sure a lot of your listeners have at one point have served on a board for a nonprofit, for a church, whatever.
Yeah.
Now imagine if you're serving on a board, but it, it, you're not just the board of, you're the board of the police, you're the board of the fire department, you're the board of the water department, you're the board of the trash department, you're the board of the library, you're the board of the museum, you're the board of the zoo, um, and on and on and on. And so it is, there's, the city has, I believe 40 different departments and you are the board, you know, and.
Who oversees all of that.
Yeah. You fiscally oversee all that. And so it's a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot of work, but, uh, you know, but it's important work. Um, I do, I'm, I am glad we have, we have people running. Um, that's always important. And I, and I, and I'm glad that people run, you know, I think, um, you know, I don't like it when races are uncontested, you know?
Yeah. Because that, that, that's, that really breeds more of the same.
Well, and, well, people don't get, people don't get choice, you know, and it also, you know, even, and let's jump over to the, to the mayor's race. You know, I, you know, I'm glad that Jennings is running because people need to have a choice. They need to be, okay, I need to be able to choose between something. If people don't run, you know, then, um, there is no choice.
There's no democracy if there's no choice.
Democracy dies without choice, you know? Putin runs for president too. Yeah.
Allegedly.
He ran for president.
I don't know who ran against him, but.
People voted for him, yeah.
But yes, you're right.
So anyways, I, I think that's, you know, that's important, you know, it's, it has been, I was trying to, and, you know, I haven't been involved in any of the campaigning.
Sure.
Um, but I, you know, I wanted to stay out of this race.
Yeah. I know there were some things that, like, I know you and, um.
Yeah, we did, but we took an ad out.
Councillor Foster both joined together to put out, to kind of dispel, because that's what's going on. There's a lot of numbers being thrown around.
Here's the thing that, here's the thing that, that's been really, really rough. And, and I, I, I reached out to Jennings. I didn't get a response directly. But, uh, it's, I, I want people to vote on the facts. I want people to have the right information. And, and what really has been disturbing about, um, you know, the, the Jennings campaign, is that he is running this campaign like, uh, well, I guess he's using, I want to say, you know, antiquated tactics. Like your, like your, like your, like your voters are, are not very smart.
Okay.
Like they can't understand the nuance of, of what's, what's going on here. And so, you know, the thing that we, the thing that really, you know, that I reached out to Jennings about and said, hey, you need to, you need to take this back because you said, you, you misrepresented, you grossly misrepresented what happened to the council. Now, yes, there was, there was a document and you can find it and it does say $61 million on it. But, uh, you know, I liken it to like, when you go and buy a car.
Right.
You might go, you might look at all the different price tags and all the cars. Now you know that you're not buying that Ferrari.
You see the Ferrari and you're like, man, I love to have that Ferrari.
I remember when I went, when Tesla was brand new and I went and I sat down inside of, inside of a Tesla Roadster and I took, even took a picture. I didn't walk out of that dealership with a Tesla. That wasn't, that wasn't going to be the car that, uh, that was going to make sense for, for my family and in my, in, in our economics. And I think that it's, it's disingenuous for him to present that and say, well, they're, they're fiscally, and then, but then use that evidence. Here's a $61 million, million dollar plan.
Right.
That number one is, it's not even a final plan. It's, it's a, it's a concept.
Right.
And they like to give us numbers on these concepts. The, the irony was that we're, we're looking at this plan in the meeting, right? Um, the first time any of the councillors had seen this number, we're looking at this plan and, and, and we're like, why is this $61 million? We were trying to even figure that out. Why could this could possibly be $61 million? Because we've looked at, we've been looking at the baseball parks for a while.
Sure. And you're like, what's that grass made of?
And, and, and we, and we had looked at, uh, you know, and we had had some estimates come in before.
Sure.
You know, we had looked at estimates between, between 12 and 20 million in, in that range for, for building these, these, these baseball complexes. And so, um, and so when the, the state legislator gave us an allocation, um, so when they give us an allocation for something, we can use it on whatever they told us we can.
Sure. It's earmarked specifically for whatever they say this is that money for.
And that's the other thing too. It's like, they say, well, you guys approved spending a half million dollars on this. It's like, we couldn't have spent that half million dollars on any.
Right.
Thing else.
They couldn't have said, well, yeah, we gotta have me and we could put it on roads or we could do it here. They said, no, here's that.
It was earmarked. So even again, that's just, that's disingenuous.
Right.
Um, you're not presenting the facts right now. If you've got a better idea, I would love to hear the ideas, you know? Um, but, uh, I'd love to know how, you know, if Jennings thinks we need baseball fields and how he wants to pay for them. I think that would be great. That would be something that's great to run on, but, but just attacking those. And, and I think that's the problem that we do have in Roswell is we have to be careful. We have a lot of stone throwers. We have a lot of people are like, well, I, I don't know, I, I don't know what that is, but that, that doesn't feel right. Or, or I'm just against, I want to be against them. And they start throwing stones and, and, um, and I'm okay with, we want to have good dialogue, but, but, but bring facts. People, people make too much, and this happens a lot on council as well, is that, is that it's like you're making an emotional decision.
Right.
You know, and that's what Jennings is hopefully to do with his campaign is he's building this argument. It's like, well, these guys are fiscally responsible when, you know, and we took out that ad because we're like, well, you know, people vote wherever they want to. You know, if they want to vote for Jennings, that's their business.
Well, and people listen in snippets and little, you know, they hear a headline and they, they treat it as gospel because that's what people do.
Sure, absolutely. And so, and so we, you know, we, in that, in that ad that we, we put out, you know, we really wanted to put out, here's the, here are the facts. You know, um, and the reality is that this council has been fiscally very responsible, very conservative, you know? The, the first, it starts with, and, and let me, let me dive a little bit into how the kind of, for the budgeting process works. It starts with, the first thing the council has to do is say, how much money do we, we think we're going to make?
Right.
You know, we.
And they, they basically look at last year's budget and use that as a.
Well, we look at last year's income.
Gotcha. Right. And use that as a, as a measuring stick.
Because, because, you know, if, if, if you're not careful, you know, we've got some good bureaucrats, but I'm going to talk about them, you can't have a negative life. The bureaucrats, well, they want more revenue to, to solve their problems. And so, like, well, we think we're going to make this much. And, and the first thing that, you know, um, and councillor Perry was involved in this and the other people on finance, uh, myself, we like, no, 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 no. You don't, don't assume that you're going to make whatever millions of dollars, you know, assume that your income is going to be down lower.
Gotcha.
Is we just project lower numbers.
Hope for the best, plan for the worst.
Yes, but, but so, and so I think that's even, even starting. It's like, let's, 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 let's go on the conservative side about how much taxes we think we're going to get.
Gotcha.
That's step number one.
That way you're not disappointed when you see the real number.
Well, what happens is you, you overspend.
Yeah.
Because then you budget for whatever and then all of a sudden you didn't get as much money as you thought.
Is better than spending too much.
Right. And so we've made sure that we have surplus. Not, that's not thing number one. The, the second thing that we did is that the, the, the state requires the city to keep one twelfth of a reserve. So one, one twelfth of our operations budget. So I call it.
Basically a month of operating cost.
I call it the rainy day fund. So if for some reason, and you, and you gotta think about that, well, that's not very long, but it's of some reason that, you know, you, you have a dip.
It's kind of assuming everything shuts down and you've got no other income coming in. You could run the city for another 30 days.
Yes, absolutely. And so, and, and we, and of course we're like, well, we can, we need to be, we need to be more robust than that.
Sure.
Um, because that's not a lot of lead time. Um, now the, the, going, going to absolute zero, nothing coming in is, is going to, is not rare. But imagine if there was an event where you had a 50% fallout.
Sure.
Well, then that's not, then now that's, that's enough money for.
To make an impact.
To make it 60 days, you know? And so we said, okay, well, we want to be able to keep everything operating as normal through a six month period. So then if it dropped down to half, and so then, okay, well, we need three twelfths, you know, and so, which is a significant investment.
That's three times what is mandated.
It's three times those mandated. And you know what? And, and the people who are coming up, and again, I like a lot of our people working the budget, but they're, they've got a thousand projects and they want to spend that money. And, and it was, it was this council, you know, uh, it was the council that said, no, we are going to hold the line. And we, they say, they brought us a budget and they had one twelfth and they said, no, go back. We want three twelves, you know? You know, we, when the shutdowns happened, um, uh, we, uh, you know, we dramatically cut the budget.
Right.
You know, um, and, and we've, and we've held the line on that too.
Sure.
It wasn't, it was, it was a time for us to really to force the city just to cut the fat out. And we cut out a lot, a lot of fat.
And I would imagine, you know, because you look at the world we live in, you're like, no, no, we need to protect what we got here. And quite frankly, the city council looks at one month is not enough. We're, you know what? That's, that's something to make people feel better. That's not even something that's got teeth. At least three months is something we can at least have a foundation for and work with if, if everything goes squarely here. You know, and, and so I, you're right, because I think the month is almost something that voters or politicians will, we got you covered. We got a month worth of it. But in reality, if things go down, that month ain't gonna help nobody. Uh, and at least three months, you're like, all right, now we got something, at least we've got a game plan and options.
We've got time.
So, and, and, and so that's really forethought on, on the council's part and saying, you know what? What they're saying is not enough protection for us. We want more protection. And that's what you guys decided on.
And so it's, you know, I feel like that, you know, again, wasn't, didn't really take an ad out for the thing. It's just, we want to set the record straight. We took that ad out. It's like, okay, this is, this is just not true. Now, if, if Jennings wants to go out there and run on ideas, great, you know?
But tell him as such.
But put the ideas out there, you know, and I, and I think the question I would ask is, okay, do you think we need new baseball fields? Cause he hasn't answered that question. How would you like to pay for those new baseball fields?
Sure.
You know, I, you know, when, when you look at the, when you look at the mayor's race, here's something I think people need to really understand. And the, the mayor's race is not, even though it's got all the attention, it's not the most important race happening right now. Um, and because you notice when I said, you know, now, I, now Dennis certainly was, was, was happy to, was in support of the budget. So I, I, I want to give Devon, Dennis, you know, his, his proper due.
Sure.
It's not like he, he could have resisted the budget, but he didn't. He was definitely in support of having a fiscally conservative budget.
Sure.
Um, but the work is done by the councillors, you know, the mayor's, the mayor's most important job. Um, and the mayor has a lot of different roles, but the most important job the mayor has is, uh, he or she is the parliamentarian, runs the meetings.
Steers you guys, keeps you on task.
Keeps us absolutely. You know, you've got, you've got 10 councillors and that's, and, and to be honest, that's probably Dennis's strongest point. If you've been to a meeting, he runs a very tight ship.
He does. He does not allow nonsense to get out of.
Does not allow to get not, he absolutely not. Sometimes he's a little too teacherish for me, but, but he does. He, he runs a tight ship.
Sure.
Um, uh, you know, the mayor does not set the budget.
The mayor really, I mean, other than break ties, he, he's not really involved in decision making at all.
Well, no, he's, he's involved.
He has input, but at the end of the day, city council is the one making the things happen.
And I think, you know, when we've had this whole talk about the airport authority, this was one of the things that I think was frustrating for me because, um, I know I reached out to, uh, to different people on the different task force and stuff like that and said, hey, you know, um, let's figure out something, let's figure out what the, the compromise is. Let's figure out a way forward because, because, you know, from where I sat and a couple of other councillors sat, we looked at the, the airport authority as presented in the legislation. And we said, this is not going to work. Um, we didn't say, no, we don't want any sort of whatever, you know, we, we authorized the joint ta, the task force, they said joint task force. And, and, and myself and some other councillors, we, we, we went to, we talked, we, we reached out to different parties and said, hey, um, let's, let's, let's do something. And, uh, the sad part was that, is that people got so infixed in their minds that, well, if Dennis is against it, we can't do it. And, which is not true. We've, we've worked around, it's like if, if the mayor is against something, um, you just, you, the councillors are the ones who, you know, who have the votes. And I, I remember one time in particular, the mayor had something on the agenda, you know, the mayor, the mayor can't put things on the agenda, but the council took it off.
Sure.
You know?
At the end of the day, they had that say.
We didn't, we didn't want to deal with it. And I think, uh, you know, there's, there's this illusion that somehow, that's how American type like pulls the strings.
Right.
Of the councillors, you know, and, and, and it's just, I've seen every one of those councillors, uh, stand up to, to, to Dennis when it was appropriate.
There's 10 individual people there, all with their own thoughts and opinions. Some agree with the mayor, some don't. It's just what it is.
Jennings came and spoke, and, and he's been at a couple of the council meetings and he came and spoke and he, and he started, you know, um, he started chastising us for the, uh, for the aquatics center, the rec center. It wasn't big enough or this or that, the other thing.
Deep in the pool, all the things we're hearing.
You know, maybe valid, maybe not, but here's the, here's the thing that, that again, this was, it's like, it's like Jennings, um, you, you, this is not going to work for you. Let's say, let's say you win, you, you are, these are the people you have to work with.
Sure.
And you're not, you're not approaching it in a diplomatic way. You're, you're coming out and you're throwing stones at us. And the reality is, and then I started looking around on the council. And I'm like, does Jennings even realize that, uh, half of these people weren't on the council when that passed?
It's true. There's a lot of new faces.
There's, there's a lot of new faces. And, and I will tell you a story that, you know, his brother Tom, different person, but Tom was mayor. For four years, Tom wanted to fire the city manager and he was not able to. Now the city manager has a lot of power.
Yeah.
The city manager, you know.
Is that something the city council has to do?
The city council, yes.
Gotcha.
The, the, the mayor appoint.
Cause all, at the end of the day, you guys hire, I mean, he recommends and puts.
That's the main job. That's the main job. Two, two jobs, the city council have the main jobs, hire the city manager and approve the budget.
Now usually the mayor kind of vets and kind of presents you candidates.
The mayor does all the nominating, but you know, even when we hired Joe, I don't, I'm pretty, and I was on, on the council, so, but I, I don't think Joe was the first, was, was Dennis's first choice.
There was, uh, if I remember right, there was a couple of people fell through and yeah, before it finally, yeah.
Ultimately it was. So, uh, so, and that was the thing where, where the, the mayor nominated somebody, the council said, no, bring us somebody else, you know? And that, so that part, that is part of the mayor's job, but, but this is the thing is that we have to, we cannot operate politics in this town the same way that you operate them in Santa Fe.
Sure.
And the thing that has been extremely frustrating with Jennings is that he is running his campaign like he's running for a legislative state.
It is, uh, yeah, it's very.
And that's not, and that's not what the mayor is. The mayor needs to be someone who brings people together, especially those councillors. And when you, when you go out there and you attack those councillors, now I'm not going to be on there this next term.
Sure.
But, you know, but.
You'll be in the audience.
Well, I don't know.
At least a couple nights.
Maybe a couple nights, yeah. When it's pertinent.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, I, I, you know, I, I, I think that it's like, wait a minute, we don't want a mayor who's, who's, who's viciously attacking these effectively volunteers. I mean, we make a little bit of money, but it's nothing worth what time it takes.
Yeah. You're not, you're not getting rich all day.
And, and so it's opposed to saying, hey, I'm going to, you know, he's not setting up a tone of, I'm going to be reaching out, I'm going to be working with you guys. Because he's taking that same democratic, democratic concept of, but we're going to take this by force. We're going to take this by force. And, and, and that, that is what is wrong with politics today. It's like you, you cannot, it's like, it's, it's all about, we're going to grab power and then we're going to do whatever, whatever we want. I almost said a bad word there. Whenever I was on the radio, um, hey, we're going to do, we're going to do, we're going to do whatever. It's what my kids, we call it the sharp words. I almost use a sharp word. I'm sure my kids are, hi Maverick, hi Louis, I've been helping. They're all listening right now.
Do you have a penance for almost, well, you said almost, you didn't do it. So you're good.
So, you know, and, 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 and this kind of stone throwing, you know, as opposed to saying, okay, what are the ideas? Now, he, he has said that he wants to hire more police. Oh, great. I want him to sit down, look at the budget and tell me how, what, what.
Where that's coming from.
Where that's coming from.
It's easy to say that.
It's easy to say that. And certainly it's, and certainly it's an ongoing conversation that the council has. It's not like that we've said, we never want to hire more police. You know, it's, it's an ongoing question of, do we have the right amount? Are we paying them the right amount? And it's not, it's something that we're constantly evaluating. And so he, the, the, his ads oversimplify these, these problems, number one. Um, but the, the main thing is that they, they are just, you know, the thing about the, um, uh, the, uh, you know, more, more recently, he did, they about, we, we're working on trying to get, we're trying to get an airport hangar.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Jennings, Senator Jennings was at the groundbreaking event. His picture, the governor was there. His picture was in, he's holding a shovel.
It was a bipartisan event for sure.
It was, well, it was, and, and it's, it's a nonpartisan event. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a partisan event. And, uh, you know, we had representatives from the city there, we had a couple of councillors there.
Sure.
Um, it was.
It was the leaders of our community.
It was leaders of our community. The governor was there too. And, and I think that, you know, and then he comes to the council meeting. And so we have to figure out a way to pay for the city part of that.
Sure.
Endeavor. He, he's never been against it. And so did he come up and say, here's my plan for how we're going to pay for this?
Sure.
Did he have an idea? Or did he just come up and throw stones? And this is the problem that we have is he, is that, you know, you, 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 you can't just come up and throw stones. You have to bring ideas. You have to bring solutions. I would have been happy to say, okay, Senator Jennings, what idea do you have to pay for this? But we've got to do this now.
Sure.
We've been working on this for two years. And yes, and, and yes, it's easy to look at the process and say, well, you know, you could have done this better and you could have done this better. Hindsight is 2020, but the, but the reality is everybody that was working on that was working as hard as they could. It was a learning curve. Because we haven't built a hangar out there in, in, ever.
I know. Well, it's the forties.
Yeah. And it wasn't the city that built it. The city's never built a hangar out there.
Better government.
You know, and so it's taken the county helping us. It's taken the governor helping us. It's taken all these people. And with the current city leadership, mayor's part of that, city manager's part of that, the councils, we've brought all those people together, all those personalities together. And believe me, there's been a lot of pissing matches in this process.
Yeah.
But we've gotten past all of that, you know, and it's really a kudos to all these people who have been involved that we've made it happen. And you know what's going to happen?
Despite the personalities.
Despite the personalities, we got it over the finish line. Um, and that's a lot of hard work, a lot of councillors, you know?
I, I want to ask you, we've got, we, we only got a couple more minutes, but I want to touch on something real quick and give you a chance. I just want you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Standing on it. Um, one of the other talking points here, you hear about the, the, the public safety complex, that, that the 35 million. And it's like, thank God the voters, you know, turned that down. But I, I want your, I want your opinion on something.
That's absolutely right though.
Yeah. But I want your opinion on something, um, that this next city council is going to have to deal with. Okay. So the, the 35 million didn't get through, but that doesn't erase the fact that we have a need to, for our fire and EMS and police. They need, they need some of these things. What, what do you think the city council, this next city council is going to have to do to meet? Because that was to fix a problem down the road and maybe the 30, okay, we don't, the public said, we don't want that, but that doesn't change the need. What, what do you, what's options? What other options do you think are on the table for them? Because.
Well, I mean, there were, there, that, there was always another plan. I mean, and, and, and so you're talking about building maintenance, you're talking about that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
And so I think that we continue with, will continue operating, at least that's what's happened so far. We've continued operating as I think, when, when you attack that problem, the, you know, the, the bond issue. Number one, I look at that and I said, the system worked. You know, it was easy as a councillor.
That's by design. Yes.
It was easy. It was, you know, the people say, well, how could you possibly voted for that? Well, it was easy. I wasn't voting for it. I was voting to give the, the voters a, a voice in it.
Sure.
You know, and we had a robust dialogue over a couple of months.
Yeah. You guys knew going in, when you make a decision, say yes here, it's to bring it to the voters, not to make sure it happened.
And, you know, and I took an ad out, that was the other ad I took. I took an ad to talk about that. And, and I think that it was interesting, that whole, that whole campaign, because I think, um, you know, I, it was, but we were asking people for a serious investment, you know, and I didn't sugarcoat that with anybody. It's like, this is going, you're going to feel this.
Yeah.
Uh, if you're a property owner, you're going to feel this.
But you as a council said, but this is something we need as a community.
Yeah, we need, and so, you know, I, I think if I were going to stay on the council, you know, coming out of, coming out of the shutdowns and stuff like that. If I were going to stay on the council, I would, and, and I'm, and I'm encouraged, the councillors who are going to be on the council is that we need to work on creating a capital improvement fund.
Gotcha.
To where we take, and, and I think the way that I would propose that it works, that we, that we take that, that three twelfths. And instead of rolling it over every year, we actually, if we didn't spend it, we, we, we put it away.
Gotcha. Okay.
And then we put that into a fund specifically designated for, so that when it's time to build a new police station or whatever, that we have a bunch of money saved already.
City public facility.
Because right now the city doesn't have, you know, we took step one is we got the budget under control. You know, because we, we didn't even have the systems in place, you know, I, I, you know, the first budget meeting I was in, it was, it was like, we were with the staff and it was kind of chaos. And they're like, well, we, we're trying to do this on Excel spreadsheets. And we were like, well, how come you haven't asked us for anything else? They're like, it's, well, it's too expensive. And I said, like, we need to make that decision.
That's our job.
Yeah, we'll, we'll decide that. And so we've, we've come a long way with the budgeting process.
Gotcha.
Um, and, uh, and so now I think the next step to take is, okay, let, how do we look at, let's look at budgeting, not just as yearly thing, but how do we look at it as a five year, as a 10 year thing?
Sure.
And so we need to be thinking about, we know we're going to, we know we're going to need new police stations. We know we're going to need new fire stations. Those have to come out of GRT. And so we need to be thinking about, we know we're going to, we know we're going to need new police stations, we know we're going to need new fire stations, those have to come out of GRT. Um, they can't come out of, um, you know, you're, you're, you're not going to use your, your water bill, bill to pay for that, you know, the water, those things pay for themselves and so. Um, and so we need to start building up a fund because the way that our community would rather do things is we'd rather save the money up, um, for the expenses in the future versus borrow them.
Sure.
You know, and, and, and pay them out over, over the life. So you're going to have to do some of both of that, but, but we need to start doing the first as well.
Sure.
And I think that if.
I'm just, I'm just afraid they don't kick this down the can and next thing you know, we got Yucca Center two point O with our.
Well, I don't think.
Fire and lawn force.
We're not going to get the Yucca Center at two point O. We're not going to get the, because we're paying attention now. The thing with Yucca Center was, was that nobody was paying attention and that building got too far, got too far down the road to where we weren't keeping the repairs on it.
Yeah.
We're paying attention now. That's, I mean, and that's the other thing too, is that, is that, you know, the, uh, and I even say about, even about the mayor's race, you know, number one is the person, if, if you don't know who to vote for mayor, you need to be asking your favorite counselor who they want.
Sure. Talk to people you trust.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, because that, that's, that, that's, they're going to, the council's going to do what they're going to do. But the question is, is it going to be a situation where they have to fight a mayor to get things done, like the, like the city council that, that worked with, 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 with Tim, with Tom?
Mm-hmm.
And Tom wanted to, was fighting always to change the city manager and the city council had to constantly say no to him? Or there's going to be somebody who's going to be more in step with them.
Gotcha.
You know, and I think that, that's the reality of it. You know, I think that as far as the things that this community wants to get done, you know, uh, the things that, that, you know, that Counselor Foster wants to get done and Counselor, uh, Perry wants to get done, you know? I think those are, you need to give them, give them the guy that's going to help them get things done.
Gotcha.
Um, and, you know, uh, Jennings is just too often, as he's spoken out of both, I mean, he came in front of the council and said, he said, I support mask mandates. And then he sent out a mail and said, well, I don't support mandates. And I'm like, well, which one is it? Because we, sure, it's easy to say it now, but if something happens again.
When push comes to shove.[1604.55]